Good morning, welcome to the Calaveras County Board of Supervisors meeting for November 19th. I call this meeting to order. Supervisor Callaway is stuck in traffic but will be here shortly. Madam Clerk.
Item one, public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957B1, Title, County Administrative Officer.
Public comment.
Good morning. With, as you know, Mr. Rogers is coming out this weekend and at one point he said, "Sometimes just things just don't go right in the neighborhood." And maybe things haven't gone right here. But let me point out some good points about Mr. Albert Alt. When he came here and he heard my grievances, he approached me and I was very pleased that he did that and he did what he could to help me. Well, I don't know, Mr. Alt, outside these chambers, I thank him for that. And your tie is much better this week.
Thank you. Any further public comments? Seeing none.
Item two, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 dot six, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Che Johnson, Regarding Employee Organization/Service Employees International Union.
Public comment regarding this item? Seeing none.
Item three, pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 dot six, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Judy Hawkins, Regarding Unrepresented Employees.
Public comment regarding this item? Seeing none.
Item four, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Regarding Existing Litigation, In Regards to National Prescription Opioid Litigation, County of Calaveras et al., v. AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation et al., United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, Member Case Number 118OP45645.
Public comment regarding this item? Seeing none.
Item five, pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D2, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation, Three Cases.
Public comment? Seeing none. We will move to closed session, returning here at 9:00 AM. Thank you. County Board of Supervisors meeting for November 19th. We are leaving closed session open and we'll return to it at the conclusion of this meeting and then report out at the end of the meeting. So if you are able, will you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Clerk, would you please, ladies?
Let us begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of our wishes and one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move on to announcements.
Report of closed session. Item one, public employee performance evaluation, Government Code Section 54957...
I'm sorry, we're going to report out at the end.
I know that.
Okay.
B1, Title, County Administrative Officer, This item remains open until the end of the meeting. Item two, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Che Johnson, Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 dot six, Regarding Employee Organization/Service Employees International Union, There was no reportable action taken. Item three, Conference with Labor Negotiator, Judy Hawkins, Pursuant to Government Code Section 54957 dot six, Regarding Unrepresented Employees, There was no reportable action taken. Item four, Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D1, Conference with Legal Counsel, Regarding Existing Litigation, In Regards to National Prescription Opioid Litigation, County of Calaveras et al., v. AmerisourceBergen Drug Corporation et al., United States District Court for the Northern District of Ohio, Member Case Number 118OP45645, There was no reportable action taken. And item five, Conference with Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation, Three Cases, Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956 dot nine D2, There was no reportable action taken.
Thank you very much. So, announcements?
This is a time for county staff to provide updates of upcoming county events that may be of interest to the public.
Board members? Staff? Seeing none?
Jay.
I'm sorry. Madam Counsel?
It is with mixed emotion that I announce that I have accepted a position with Yolo County as the Assistant County Counsel. I have thought long and hard and it was a very difficult decision to make. Calaveras has been my home and I have faithfully served this community for eight years. I'm honored to have worked with the dedicated officials and staff of this county, particularly my staff. And I know that they will continue to provide excellent, exceptional legal counsel to this board and to the county as a whole. I believe this opportunity is the best path for me and more importantly, my family. I'm incredibly thankful for my time here. I have gained not only experience and knowledge but many wonderful friendships along the way. We have tackled many difficult topics and I thank you for your continued support and confidence throughout the years. My last day with the county will be December 13th. Thank you.
Megan, I want to, we will recognize you before you depart us, but I want to express my personal thank you for the work that you've done. I want to thank your husband Kevin for being so supportive and your wonderful children in putting up with all of us and you've been a wonderful soldier and a good friend and a great colleague. So, thank you very much. Okay. John, do you have announcements you need to make?
Yeah. Good morning, Board. Just a quick note about the evolving PSPS situation here in Northern California. We checked the latest maps available from PG&E this morning. Those maps were available sometime yesterday afternoon and I am happy to announce that Calaveras remains out of scope for the potential PSPS scheduled for later this week. And as a side note, as well as Toolumee County. The outage has creeped a little farther south to the area. It ends right, just north of Highway 104 and 49, right around Sutter Creek. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Since there are no other announcements from Board members or staff, we will move on to public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the Board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the Board may immediately move to the next order of business. If it is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. I think everybody here knows the rules. Three minutes. Mr. Strouton, you're up first.
Good morning. It's actually a pleasure to be here today. Saturday, I was just, San Francisco, I went for a run early in the morning and by the time I got back, it was 8:00 AM and I looked at my trusty little iPad here and I saw that the County Counsel had resigned. And she's actually a very nice lady. Originally when I came here, back to Calaveras County, it was because of a situation in West Point known as the Jeff property and a situation that has resurfaced again. It took a long time to rectify that situation, but that was our conflict and that's the first time that I came in contact with Ms. Steadfield, County Counsel. While I've had issues at times with her, I truly do wish her the best. I think that Yolo County would be a good fit for you. I think that you, as a person, are fundamentally good and want to do good. I'm going to miss you. I don't have anybody to... Anyway, I feel the same way you do right now. It's been a long road. I never intended to be involved in marijuana and I still am not involved in this county's marijuana issue. It's a bad fit for the county. It's a county that's very conservative and I wish the people that are going to do it the best and I hope that some of them can succeed, but I see it fraught with a lot of public outcry, public problems that will occur in the public sphere, continual upheaval. But I wish you guys the best and I wish you the very, very best.
Mr. Moore? Or Ms. McBride?
I'm Will Moore from District Five, Rachel, Calaveras, Valley Springs, and I have a couple of comments to make about rural poverty. I grew up in what would now be called rural poverty. We didn't know we were poor, rural poverty wasn't a part of the lexicon. We just thought money was hard to come by. Now, we had pigs and chickens and a potato patch but no cash money. And in this conversation last, and the same thing is happening with Calaveras County somewhat. Rural poverty is a problem over the whole world. I mean, it's Africa, China, and everyone is struggling with this problem. And money flows to where the action is and the action is in the cities. It is in the rural areas and that's true here too. So, you know, last week there was some discussion about the general plan and there's always this discussion about jobs and bringing in people and getting development going and all of that stuff. But civilization is built on infrastructure and on a building code of five acres in a septic tank, how much development are you going to get? You know, we need a sewage plant. We need to deal with the sewage. And that's true of civilization all over the world. So, I don't know. Town I was raised in was about 400 when I lived there, is down to about 200 now. And Calaveras County is not exactly growing either. You know, somebody can move in from outside, they can sell a house in the Bay Area, come out here and buy a house and have some money left, but for someone born and raised here, they can't afford to live here. I mean, a person who lives on the local economy only, starting out from high school or whatever, I don't think they could possibly afford to live here. So, you know, I'd like to see some movement toward getting a sewage plant built. I guess they have one but it's not capable of covering the whole county. Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. McBride? Welcome.
Good morning. Terry McBride, District Two. I am following up on the talk that I did last Tuesday and I was commenting about how the property taxes have gone up. Originally, it was just District Two and we figured it's because of the chaos, we were all just pay the damn bill because we're trying to get on with our lives, sort of a thing, and we're wondering if, well, you know, we were supposed to get money from PG&E but many of us have been left high and dry. So, I have 10 acres, I have, as I said earlier, seven properties in Calaveras, six of which have anomalous tax increases. On the 10 acres of which I've lost thousands of trees, the property tax has gone up 32% from before the fire. You can start understanding our anger here. Other piece of land, 16 acres, lost 95% of the trees. Property tax went up 76% from before the fire. And other acreage, 49, 75, and then I have two pieces that aren't affected by Butte Fire. They went up 79% and 46%, but my name is on the list of who's going to go after PG&E because I sure am not going to drop it. So, you have to wonder, is that why it's been done? And if that is the case, that's profiting on other people's misery. That is pretty sad, but that's how I'm looking at it and many people outside of our district have brought that up to us. One of the things that was brought, oh, and also I have land in Amador and how come it has not gone up? How come when we talk to people that live in Amador and Toolumee, theirs are not going up other than the small percentages that we used to have? If you go back and look at your taxes, you'll see that you would have small increases and you expected it. You figured, well, last year it was 25, I better maybe figure 28 this year or something like that. But these are huge jumps and especially on burned land and that it's more than what it was worth before it was burned. So, part of it, they blamed it on the growths. Well, because people came in, they sold their land, it was burnt, why not? They could make money and go on and live their life, so they blamed it on the growths. Well, how come it hasn't come down? That only lasted for maybe a year or so. Now, the value of land has significantly dropped. You can't sell it. I mean, there are houses that sit for sale for a long time and pieces of land are not selling. So, how come our taxes haven't gone down? But they should have because it's based on the value. Am I correct? So, I want to remind everybody to file by November 30th. If you feel that your taxes were great, yay. I actually have one piece of land I have no arguments on. I can't believe it. One out of seven. That's pretty sad. So, if you have any complaints on your property taxes, and I got to wonder, is she raising the supervisors? Because if you're not aware of it... Oops, sorry.
Thank you, Terry. Ms. Sanchez?
Cynthia Sanchez, D2. People in the burn area have been hit from every angle since this fire. The extortion of the tree and debris removal programs, enormous property tax increases, the attempt to tax shipping containers as a structure, 8.06, which included taxing all the tiny outbuildings, 10 by 12 and smaller. One problem that people in D2 have been experiencing since the fire, assessors are showing up on their property uninvited, taking pictures of their outbuildings like a doghouse and a shipping container. In addition, property owners who have rebuilt their home, the same size or smaller, their taxes are increasing, not even in sync with the real estate market. The fire victims were told that if they rebuilt the same size home or smaller, that their tax base would start at the level or base prior to the fire. On some properties, this is not happening. Some property values have more than doubled. The assessor's job is to assess properties in the county. Permission must be obtained by the property owner for the assessor to access the property. I will read from the State Board of Equalization letterhead written by the Attorney General's Office concerning the assessor's right of trespass on private property dated December 8th, 1978. The first question deals with the statutory procedures by which a county assessor may obtain information regarding property. We conclude that an assessor has several rights of discovery for the appraisal and assessment of property when the owner refuses entry upon the property, that simply being the permit, the plan submitted to the county, and the inspection card. The second question concerns whether a county assessor may obtain an administrative inspection warrant in order to approve, I mean appraise and assess property. We conclude they may not. The third question concerns whether a county assessor may enter private property without a warrant and against the will of the owner. We conclude that they may not. The fourth question is that a county assessor would commit criminal trespass by his or her entry upon private property against the will of the owner and refusal to leave the property. There are even cases where homeowners can have the assessor arrested for trespassing. Tax assessors taking photos on private property, is this an invasion of privacy? In any other instance, this might be considered stalking. And now, a new pattern is surfacing. Due to the assessor's 6,000 transfer backlog, property owners who have purchased property within the last six years are now receiving three to five years of supplemental tax bills and back taxes on their property, even in years that they didn't even own the property. The response people are receiving is, "We have a backlog and this is how we are handling it." Thank you.
Pam?
Pamela Richmond, D2. In 2017, after having returned to my burned property, I was kindly asked to attend a local meeting, sorry here, attend a local meeting with Leslie Davis and concerned taxpayers. Thus began my dissent down the rabbit hole as Jefferson Airplane's gray slick writes, "When logic and proportion have fallen sloppy dead." Davis acknowledged problems with property taxes as we now know. These were blamed on a timid employee noticeably absent, a computer glitch that maliciously impacted only some for a few years, but others the brunt of some kind of super glitch, with taxes unaccounted for more than eight years. Inadequate training and staff worsened by inexplicable high turnover, staff also not present. Leslie also acknowledged fudging the numbers a bit to give us burn zone victims a break, now apparently over, but we should not go to the Board of Equalization, for as she said, we would pay the price. This, as she turned to face a journalist, was all off the record. Wow, a real leader who would throw her employees under the bus got my attention. Later, I was asked to help organize various properties whose taxes showed anomalies and leaned on to type fast, but I couldn't help thinking as I lined up columns of numbers and years with assessed values and noticing, though I'm no math whiz, that nothing made sense. I could not see one pattern in any of these properties save that they were just generally, mostly, going up, particularly in the burn zone. It did not matter the acreage, new buildings, old buildings, no buildings, new purchase, transfer baseline taxes, Prop 13, it was a free-for-all of numbers. No percentages, variables, or formulas could be applied. My more mathematically inclined cohort, also well acquainted with the histories of the properties, and I went through the data verifying and thinking about it. We presented this report to the Board of Equalization in Sacramento. We now know we have a rogue tax assessor. Multiple experts could see that there are problems, supplemental taxes, sometimes up to five in one year, back taxes demanded from those who never owned the property in question, taxes doubled and for no improvements for owners of property prior to Prop 13 or ones who did inter-family transfers. We may generally understand 78th Prop 13 and how it protects owners from property values and taxes increasing by more than 2% generally. But despite our research involving experts, BOA and Realtors, there's been no clear rationale or algorithm for these anomalies. We've all speculated as to why taxes have gone exponentially up. The job of an assessor is not to raise revenue. It is to collect the taxes. Theirs is not sadly a creative job, but it is an important one and one I've been most shocked to learn has almost no real oversight. Being an assessor is like running your own little kingdom, in this case into the ground. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Wistratt?
Good morning. I would like to thank Chairman Garamendi for something fantastic that he did. He worked with Caltrans to get us a safer intersection of Highway 49 and 26 and I think he should be recognized for his efforts. That's the good thing I have to say this morning. It gives me hope and I have not been here speaking to you in recent months. I have watched you on TV after your meetings were over and after the last meeting, I was totally appalled. I wouldn't call any one of you stupid. I think all of you are good people and have good brains that work, but the system that you have in place does not work for us, the public. I'll tell you why. You don't know how to legislate. It's not all your fault. You'd have to be creative. You need a legislative auditor. You need someone who knows government, someone with a master's in public administration, someone who knows government accounting, and someone who keeps an eye on what is happening in the state. You need help. Then you might be able to do something. What totally appalled me was the marijuana bill that you folks passed, three to two. Okay. Supervisor Tofanelli and Supervisor Mills both brought up points that they were unhappy with in the bill. So, why do we have a bad bill? Why? Because just because the vote is three to two and you can get away with it, you pass a bad bill? It's ridiculous. What you're supposed to do is amend the bill. So, if two people have concerns about it and those concerns can be taken care of by doing another version of the bill, a second draft or third draft, whatever it takes, that's what you need to do. We want you to legislate on our behalf, for our interests, to take care of the people who live here the best you can.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for listening. Please consider.
Thank you. Ms. Carter?
Have you heard that one-third of the high school students in California are vaping? And the big draw is THC. And also in the news, there's a big deal about concussions, that it's affecting people's MRIs show that marijuana affects your brain. It deteriorates it. It makes it so it won't work in a natural way so that you have the resources that you need to act and behave and care about other people more than your choke.
Thank you. Further public comment? Al?
Boy, I was shocked to find out we're losing Megan and I don't think we've ever had somebody that high caliber in our county. It's kind of like a combination of beauty and brains and we'll have a difficult time replacing her. And by the way, Megan, you're invited to be a director in the Calaveras County Taxpayer Association. We hope you find the time. The, I think that's enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Public comment? Sandy?
Good morning. I just want to make a brief statement as well. Megan, thank you for all you've done over the course of the time I've known you. It's been my pleasure for four years. We've interacted on some pretty significant issues in this county and you've done an amazing job. Your leadership has been greatly appreciated and I think I can speak for a lot of people. We're going to miss you, but we expect to see you in McCollumee Hill from time to time and good luck, very much so. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, we will come back to the Board to take on the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda. the consent agenda for later discussion.
Thank you. Board members, does anybody like to pull an item from the consent agenda? Seeing none, staff, public. Seeing none, is there a motion to carry the consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Supervisor Stopper, second.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Callaway.
One point, the November 5th, was Marita present?
No.
So can we pull that and vote on that separate? I'd just like to clean that up before.
Certainly. You want to restate the motion?
I would, well, I would like to move everything except for item number six.
Seven.
And seven.
Is there a motion for the remainder excluding six and seven? Is there a second? Then motion? Supervisor Callaway?
That for six and seven?
We're moving everything else.
Yes.
We have a second by Supervisor Callaway. All favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carries five zero. We'll move on to item six.
I'll move six and seven.
Oh, we got it. Go through our process.
So I'll read item six and seven together. The minutes of the Board of Supervisors' regular meeting held November 5th, 2019 at 8:00 a.m., and the minutes of Board of Supervisors' special meeting held on November 5th, 2019 at 1:30 p.m.
Okay. Supervisor Stopper, you wanted to make a change to it?
Just, I'd like to move six and seven.
Okay. Very well.
Second.
We have a motion to move six and seven. We have a second by Supervisor Tofanelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Abstained.
Opposed, one abstention. Supervisor Callaway is our abstention.
Good catch, man.
All right. Moving on to our regular agenda.
Item 19 is from the Office of Emergency Services. To authorize the Director of the Office of Emergency Services to accept $161,639 in 2019 Public Safety Power Shut-off Resiliency Funds. To authorize the Director of the Office of Emergency Services to sign the grant agreement and subsequent grant amendments and requests for payment. To authorize a budget transfer, increasing revenue in the total amount of $161,639 to line item 101-00470-4455. And increasing appropriations in the amount of $161,639 to line item 101-00470-5499, Authorize and direct the purchasing agent to adjust the fiscal year 2019-2020 capital asset schedule to include four mobile generators, one PSPS equipment trailer, and one generator refueling trailer. This requires a four-fifths affirmative vote of the board.
Mr. Hosberg.
Thank you. Good morning, Supervisors. The Office of Emergency Services, actually during the last PSPS, notified us that we were awarded $161,639 to build our resiliency in regards to public safety power shutdowns. That was a Thursday or a Friday. The trek for the funds arrived via FedEx the next Monday. And so we've built a budget around the thought of being able to generate power and build resiliency, both in, through resiliency centers, as well as other avenues where we wouldn't have power, say during an election, or during an event where we would need to generate power outside of a power safety shutdown. The budget includes approximately $120,000 for four generators, that works out to about $30,000 per generator, a PSPS equipment cargo trailer for $15,000, and a generator refueling trailer for $8,000. In addition, miscellaneous supplies and equipment for $5,139. The miscellaneous equipment would be like tables and chairs and things that we could set up the resiliency centers with, in addition to educational materials. The professional services for $13,500 is for approximately nine transfer switches that we could distribute throughout the county to pre-flight locations where we could tow the generators, plug them into the building, and energize the building. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Supervisor Mills?
I've got a couple of questions for you, John. On these mobile generators, how big are they?
Hundred kilowatt.
How big?
100 kilowatt.
Are they 443 phase?
We have not selected the generator itself yet. We will, our intent is to purchase four-like generators that could go to the various locations and plug in.
Based upon the use in the resiliency centers during the last outages, do you feel that 100 KW is a bit of an overkill?
No, because of the manner in which we deployed them was kind of on the fly. Our hope in building this resiliency is that we'll be able to energize an entire building rather than just a spider box.
So are you looking for doing the transfer switches, say for instance, at the West Point Community Center, down at the VFW Hall in Valley Springs, that kind of thing?
Those kinds of public buildings, yes.
Where would you be placing it in Copperopolis?
We haven't determined locations yet.
Okay. Because I know the school was used down there before, Angel City also was using the high I think we need to adequately identify where these resiliency centers are going to be, how much need there is for them, that we don't create a Taj Mahal effect here with these resiliency centers if they're not going to be fully utilized. We're spending an awful lot of money here to create these. And of course, when you buy them, you're going to have to maintain them. It's not as simple as just plugging them in and going. And oftentimes, if we don't power them up and run them at somewhere close to capacity, we get into trouble all by itself, because they're not designed for idle. So I just want to be sure that we're doing the right thing here and sizing correctly and being able to meet the needs of the local community and not create some very large generation equipment which cannot be fully utilized.
Right. And from our experience, these are very fluid events, and that's why we're selecting and building into the plan more switches, so that we can have more flexibility where we deploy them. Actually, the generators are designed to work at 50% load, and so we've used 100 kilowatts kind of as a baseline to be able to energize large areas such as the West Point Center. The schools, in our experience, from the first time we deployed them, the conflict that kind of arose naturally is the schools receive their money from having attendance, and if they cancel school, then they don't have that attendance and the funding doesn't follow that. So even if we open a center, if the school can be open, they don't want to mix the public and the schools. So we found that the schools weren't a very effective place to look at because of that. They want to open as soon as possible and stay open as long as possible, and that doesn't necessarily coincide with our planning for schools. So those are lessons that we've learned through our experiences and that we're pursuing and taking that knowledge to this plan, to be flexible, to serve the needs of the communities, and to use this equipment to its maximum. We would exercise these generators every 30 days, which is the recommended exercise interval, to make sure that they're operable and deployable.
The question would be that PG&E had put up some resiliency centers in the county also. Has there been anything worked out as to just exactly what they will continue to supply or support in these events?
So again, one of the reasons that we're asking for more switches and mobile generators is that if PG&E comes in and we continue to partner with them, and they're able to provide us with the resiliency centers, then these just build our resiliency ability deeper. We could deploy them to county facilities that need generation. We could deploy them to critical infrastructure that needs generation. It gives us an awful lot of resiliency in the broader scope. And if PG&E chooses to continue to partner with us, that just builds it that much more.
Appreciate your answers. Supervisor Stopper?
This is all grant money, no impact to the general fund?
Yes, sir.
You know, with anything like this, including the generators we have outside, there's a certain amount of upkeep to that. Very good that you're going at 50% load. A generator can run at much less than 50% load, but you get the best efficiency out of a generator at 50% load, through my experience. We apply it generally, we don't want to, you know, max load for everything running in a building, you want to apply it close to 60%, but running at 50%, you get the best efficiency on fuel. With that, you know, this is beneficial to the community in these situations, I'm glad that the state's stepping up for these PSPS grants. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to facilitate, be able to get a lot of this equipment, or it would ride on our general fund. Thank you.
Very well. Supervisor Mills, you have another question?
One additional question is that once we take control of these pieces of equipment, we're going to have to budget year-over-year for their maintenance and operational expenses, unless there's other OES or FEMA money that comes in to help do that. Have you had any estimates on what the year-over-year maintenance costs are going to be on these units?
It's going to be dependent on the units that we select and whether or not we're able to select a maintenance plan that comes with the generator. So that is a part of the process that we're engaged in at this time. And just as a side note, thank you Supervisor Stopper, one of the things that we did when we built in the extra, or the extra equipment of the cargo trailer and the refueling trailer, those refueling trailers can refuel our current infrastructure. We actually came very close in the last, in the longest PSPS, I call it the PSPS, the sequel, where we were getting close for fuel, and we actually kind of had to get some fuel on the fly. And that's why we included the refueling trailer, is that will give us the ability to hook that up to just about any vehicle that the county owns.
How much does it hold?
It carries, I think it's 107 gallons. The limit before you have to have special permitting is 110.
Right. Well, I just, during refueling, the last PSPS with the other company that I've worked for, we, over the entire county, we produced about 3,800 gallons of diesel into those generators to run the infrastructure that needed to move.
Yeah. And the refueling trailer, 100 gallons, would run the main generator here that energizes this building for about 25, or 24 hours or so, again depending on load. And then the other feature of the equipment cargo trailer is I hope to equip that with, like an RV air conditioner or heat strip, and a shade awning off the side, so that if we needed to deploy some of these resources during smaller instances like a structure fire or a particular event, we could actually create essentially a micro resiliency center on the fly with the trailer.
Supervisor Tofanelli?
Yeah, John. It says, "As a condition of receiving this funding, counties will be required to collaborate with the cities within their jurisdiction." Have you reached out to Angels? Have you talked to anybody as far as what you're buying here? Are they aware of any of that?
As I sent this information forward via email to all you guys earlier, we have reached out to our friends and our response partners at Angels Camp. They are actually submitting their own grant. We collaborate with them in providing some experience with our resiliency centers and how we could work together. And we are on track with that. We're in contact with Angels on a regular basis regarding emergency management.
Supervisor Mills, you have more questions?
John, again, one more question, because it keeps coming up with local agencies and the attitude with COOPA and the amount of hours that we're permitted to run emergency generators of certain horsepower and greater. Has there been any motion from the state in allowing us to get around those rules?
That's at a level that I haven't seen any of that. What I can tell you about the motion in particular to this grant was about a three-day turnaround. In 20-plus years of public service, I've never seen an award letter arrive, and three days later FedEx shows up with a check. I was astonished, to be completely candid, that we got a check in the mail as quickly as we did. And so that's why the plan that you see before you is not completely fleshed out. This happened in such short order that we, to be honest, I was on my heels that we received a check that quickly. So we put together this plan based on what we knew from four prior PSPS events, and tried to use the stuff that we did right and the stuff that we could do better to put this plan together to be more resilient for the county.
I guess my conversation should go to the board itself rather than you regarding COOPA, because that's where penalties start to kick in when we use generators more than a certain number of hours. And it's just, it's got to be something that we're going to have to deal with the state on, as to how they give us an exemption in an emergency to allow generators to be used and not be penalized under COOPA for using them. So, just making a point.
Very well. Thank you. Public comment on this item? Sorry, Sir Alt, you had to...
Real quick, I want to draw, for the public, if they're not aware, although it was attached to the item, there's a very specific letter from CalOES. I want to make note of some things in the letter. It's very specific about what we can spend the money on. Equipment, three bullet points. Generators and generator connectivity, generator fuel, and redundant emergency communications. That's the allowable expenditures for these dollars for equipment. There's more allowable expenditures, but it's specific on what the money cannot be used for, and it cannot be used for OES, center staffing, security, law, fire response, any overtime charges, any staffing or new positions. So it reads to me pretty clearly in the letter from the state that they expect us to buy generators and generator connectivity. And I think it's important to note why they were so specific. This was in direct response to the October 8th PSPS, and if you recall, PG&E didn't have resiliency centers available for our county. We provided them at that time. So in direct response to that, the governor had his own response, and we got the funding immediately after that. And it's very specific in the letter that the expectation is that we create resiliency centers. And so that's why we've been so specific with the budget item. There's not a lot of latitude. We have to file two reports with the state as to how we spent this money. And if you hadn't had an opportunity to look at that, I wanted to make sure that was some context provided for our recommendation.
Thank you. Public comment? Will or Al, which one of you guys want to go first?
Will Moore from District 5. And regarding spending a lot of money, it's grant money. It isn't our tax money, and so it has to be spent. And as for the capacity of the generators, you don't know what emergency you're going to be facing. If you try to go for the minimum, you don't know what the minimum is. And further, what is the alternative would be to buy five smaller-capacity generators. Would that be a better idea than the four if they're not needed? Anyhow, thank you.
Thank you, Will. Al?
Al Scala, Taxpayer Association. Looking at this problem more deeply...
Al Scala, Taxpayer Association. Looking at this problem more deeply, and trying to look at the forest instead of just the trees, we seem to be in a pattern where we have natural catastrophes, fires, and other things. And then we declare an emergency, and then we apply for the state and federal government for money. And then the money comes, some of us think it's free lunch, but it's not free lunch. Comes with strings and attachments. And sometimes those requirements actually harm the taxpayer and the public. A case in point is when the federal government encouraged the county to take the property away from the people who lost their homes in the major fire we had. And so, thinking long-term and thinking about responsibility, a county needs to rethink the way that we handle funding for natural catastrophes in our county. And it's not just our county, other counties need to do the same thing. And actually, this needs to be done nationwide. We probably have a favorable year with our congressman about making changes to allow counties to pay their own way, like home rule. And this can be done through maybe some forms of insurance, and maybe with some government participation, or with putting reserve money aside. Our utility people, like the water district, is supposed to be setting money aside to replace known expenses coming up, like replacing pipes. Well, we know every year we're going to have expenses with these catastrophes. It'd be better for us to plan on that, put money aside, and encourage the reduction in taxes from the state and federal government, and handle our own either insurance premiums or draw from reserves to handle the problem. And there's another benefit. When you go to the federal government or the state government to get free money, it's not really free. There's an overhead to that, which is not disclosed. It could be 20%, 50%, maybe even 100%. We just don't know. The taxpayer is paying for something they don't know the real cost of. So, I don't know where to start with this, but it's with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment on this item? See, now I'll bring it back to the board for further discussion or a motion. Is there a motion?
I'll move this item.
Move by Supervisor Callaway. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Supervisor Stoppa. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're going to take just a couple minutes to get things set up, so don't go far. Welcome back. We are on item 20.
Item 20 is from the Administrative Office to Accept the Division of Cannabis Control, Cannabis Regulation Operating Budget and the Cannabis Regulatory Fees Special Revenue Fund Budget for Fiscal Year 2019-2020 and Approve Related Budget Transfers. Direct the Auditor Controller's Office to Post Said Budget Transfers and Authorize and Direct the Purchasing Agent to Adjust the Fiscal Year 2019-2020 Capital Asset Schedule to Include a Vehicle in the Amount of $25,000, a Vehicle Radio in the Amount of $3,050, and an Identification Card Machine in the Amount of $10,246. This action requires a four-fifth affirmative vote of the Board of Supervisors.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Good morning, Chair Garamendi, supervisors and member of the public. Thank you for giving me an opportunity this morning to talk about the Cannabis Regulatory Operating Budget. The presentation that you have here is obviously before you as well. I've made copies for the public, and they're available from the podium. Let's see. Sorry, I'm having quick technical difficulties here advancing the slides. All right. All right. Quickly, what we'll cover, I'll do a quick introduction and a recap of how we got here, quick discussion on Proposition 26, and ultimately, how that led to the fee studies that were approved, talk specifically about fee-related tasks, staffing that would perform fee-related tasks, equipment requested, ultimately, the impact of the potential of not having the budget approved today, and then a quick summary. I'm going to go back to some things I presented in the 10-1 meeting. If you recall, that was the meeting that the board adopted, moving the cannabis control program forward and placing it under the CAO's office. At that time, I described the ways we arrived at coming to a recommendation for the Cannabis Control Office, the first of which was lessons learned from our urgency ordinance, and a couple of quick highlights that there wasn't strong coordination between offices while all of our different departments work well at their responsibilities, or wasn't coordination and streamlining between the offices. Under the urgency ordinance, we experienced backlogs due to the sheer volume of the program. As has been noted in several different presentations, there wasn't fiscal monitoring, and ultimately, there weren't performance metrics for the UO. Also, on 10-1, I presented that in reviewing multiple hours of board videos from past boards, this board, and others, there had been various board members on the current board and previous board that cited the need for specific oversight office. As a result of the lessons learned and ultimately, board comments, we examined other counties with cannabis regulatory programs and found that many have a regulatory program with an office under the CAO's office. In fact, at the beginning of the month, I sent out a survey that was completed by CSAC and all the counties and where they stand in regulatory ordinances. Off the top of my head, I think there were 17 counties that have cannabis regulatory programs. Of the 17, there were 12 with program offices that reside in the CAO's office. The balance the other five had either in ag and/or planning. So, those counties that do have regulatory programs have them under the CAO's office predominantly. We ultimately also discussed this with the department heads, and there was a strong voice to have one specific department responsible for oversight. And then many of the department heads were included in the fee study work group that was brought before you, and the work group department heads also supported the notion of a program office and the coordination of tasks. So, ultimately, the decision to bring forward the recommendation was triangulated. We triangulated on that by reviewing the other counties, looking at other job description, compiling practices from other counties, and ultimately, our own lessons learned. And we're successful in having adoption of the program office. Ultimately, with that adoption, the board directed that we conduct the fee studies and bring those forward for finalization. I know you know this, but for the benefit of the public, I wanted to talk real quickly about Proposition 26. I'm certainly not going to give you the legal view of it, but in essence, Proposition 26 allows for local governments to impose fees to recover costs. Those fees can be charged for regulatory cost of permit issuance, inspections, administrative enforcement, and ultimately, for adjudication. And Prop 26 requires that in the effort of completing a fee study or nexus study, that tasks are specifically isolated as those related to the program that the fee would be for. And also, Prop 26 talks specifically about tasks that ultimately confer a privilege or a benefit to those who participate in the program. So, from Proposition 26, we developed the fee studies as directed by the board. The fee studies, again, were collaborated on by a work group of department heads. We had a series of meetings and ultimately landed on the fee studies that came before the board. All of the tasks in the fee studies are specific to perform regulatory tasks. The equipment personnel is all necessary for administration, regulation, and enforcement of the associated regulations. These fee studies were put forward also, not only to the board, but also to the public. If you recall, there was a press release that I submitted on 10-4, and subsequent to the press release, the fee studies were posted on the Planning Department website. If you would like to look at them, I've added the link. And just for a quick view, this is where they reside on the planning website. This is the link that I provided so that we can evidence for the public that these fee studies have in fact been appropriately published. In the fee studies, beginning particularly on 17.95 fee study on page four, there begins a discussion of each of the different departments that would have tasks specific to administration, regulation, and adjudication of the regulatory ordinance. I won't go through all the duties. These are in the fee study and have been available to the public. But real quickly, the Division of Cannabis Control would have oversight of the application process, coordinate the efforts across multiple departments, and be responsible for compliance and enforcement. Planning Department, quick summary, application review, examining for minimum zoning requirements, responsibilities for appeals, and obviously, for administrative use and conditional use permits. The Building Department would be responsible for application review, examining premises plans, et cetera. The Sheriff's Department would have a role in reviewing security measures as documented in a permit application and also supporting administrative enforcement. Public Works would have responsibility for collecting RIM fees, examining remediation to determine if it was adequate for an applicant to be able to move forward in the regulatory program as it exists now. And obviously, the Environmental Management Agency and ag would have responsibilities in validation of premises, pesticide management plan review. Again, this is a really short summary of all the duties that are expanded upon in the fee studies and have been made publicly available and adopted by the board on 10-22. So, what work have we been doing since 10-22? We have had weekly meetings of a cannabis regulatory program work group. That work group consists of staff from planning, building, the Environmental Management Agency, ag, code enforcement, legal, and fiscal. And we've been meeting typically on Friday afternoons for a couple hours at a shot to continue to work through 17.95 and examine exactly what tasks need to be done, which department would be responsible for doing them, developing checklists that would be necessary for the permit review process, just as a quick summary. We also developed two subgroups, one in particular for fiscal. And the first, most important purpose of the fiscal work group was to establish time tracking and evidencing how we would bill back time against the program. And as you know from the budget item, there's a special revenue fund where these fees, if adopted, would come into the special revenue fund. This time tracking that's been devised by the fiscal work group is how the departments would be able to submit time specific to the regulatory program and then be reimbursed on a regular basis. In our current plan, it would be monthly that departments would be reimbursed for their time and effort. We also have a technology work group that's been focused on the use of TrackIt. As you know, TrackIt is a new program for us, recently initiated, and we found, I should say they, the technology work group has devised an opportunity with TrackIt for a permit to be entered in the Division of Cannabis Control and electronic notices to be disseminated to the department. So, each department, working through their checklists of approvals, could be doing their work in parallel on these permits, and ultimately, we could implement that for other types of permits as well. Frankly, I think the work on behalf of the technology work group and streamlining the permit process will benefit all of our other processes that we have that we use TrackIt for as well. We've also been identifying process flow and distinct department tasks just to make sure that we don't have any duplication or any particular regulatory item doesn't fall through the cracks. As I mentioned, we're also developing checklists, but not just for the permit review process, but what an inspection out on site would entail and what an inspector would be responsible for looking for out on a particular site. As you might imagine, this program is a new regulatory program, so there's a lot of to-do list items as well. As we review particularly 17.95, we're making lists of things that we need to assign out to departments, develop for enforcement and administration of the program, and then we assign those tasks out, and we bring those back at consequent meetings. Our work group has agreed to continue to meet weekly until we feel like we've hit the end of developing the regulatory program. So, I don't know if that'll be November or December or sometime after the regulatory ordinance and the fees take effect, but at the end of the day, the work group's committed to making sure we do their work to make sure there's an effective regulatory program. Our current work, I'm going to estimate, I know it may be one of the questions, but since 10-22, our current work is, that we've tracked on sign-in sheets, has been approximately 200 hours. And our current staffing is working on program implementation along with all of their other program responsibilities that they had in place prior to the board adopting the regulatory ordinances. Suffice it to say, we're pulling double duty on trying to implement an effective regulatory program for 17.95 while also conducting the business of the departments that already existed. So, I know this is really hard to see. I didn't intend to minimize it to a point so you couldn't see it. This is a snapshot right out of the fee study. You've seen it before, and I've emailed it out to board members previously. One of the questions that's come before, or the board's presented to me as I've come before you, is which positions are new, which are existing. And we actually, in examining this, identified one more category, which would be duties that would be divided amongst existing staff. So, a category of existing. So, as you know from having reviewed this document previously, each department manager or department head assigned a code to their position. And ultimately, this document is, has been reduced down to a staffing item that would come before you on December 10. Typically, we bring a budget item, and if approved, then subsequently, we bring the associated personnel actions and other things forward. I wanted evidence to the board and to the public that we're not working on this in piecemeal. We've been working on it in very consistent steps. What you saw on the Excel spreadsheet has ultimately been reflected here in the staffing that would be requested as we come forward in the December 10 meeting. Please note, I don't presuppose any outcome on the vote today. I just want to show what the next steps would be, at least related to staffing, if we were to move forward. Also reflected in the budget request and in the text of the item, there were several equipment items that were noted. The ones that are particularly noted in the budget items are those that would be considered capital equipment. For questions as to where that equipment may have been reflected, these are snapshots from page 15 and page nine, respectively, of the 17.95 fee study and the 9.22 fee study. Again, these are pages, these are snapshots straight from the fee study that was developed under the authority of Proposition 26, displayed to the public, as I mentioned earlier, and then ultimately adopted by the board. And so, as we move forward, I have noted in the alternatives of the staff report, what would be the impact if staffing and equipment aren't provided ultimately through an action to authorize expenditures. Regardless of today's vote, 17.95 and 9.22 become effective on 11-22. The fees become effective 12-23. And like any other regulatory program, we will undertake the work of initiating this regulatory program because we have ordinances that say we will. And so, ultimately, departments, all of the departments that I've listed that have been involved in the work groups and the fee studies and have made recommendations for us to put these fee studies forward, those departments will, including mine, will be responsible for performing the duties associated with the regulation along with their existing programs that they have today. Ultimately, staff time and effort will be divided among existing and new programs, and as our committed staff always do, they'll work hard to get the work done best they can. can, but what we'll experience will be similar to what we experienced under the UO in that there'll be backlogs not only in the regulatory program, but the other work with the county as well. If the budget isn't approved, the Division of Cannabis Control duties will be assumed by the CAO's office because the action of the Board already was to create a, a program office and for that to reside under the CAO's office. So our staff will, will split time between responsibilities of our, our other duties, whether it's procurement or budget or any other, other things that we do, we'll split that time amongst implementation of this regulatory program as well. And then ultimately, the staffing and equipment necessary that's been identified in the fee studies could be compromised. One example that I put in the staff report, and, and I, and I picked it as a particular, particular item to highlight, is the Board was committed uniformly to us ultimately having a CBCB program. And the equipment related to printing the cannabis background clearance badges was in the fee studies and would be necessary for us to have that program. That's one of the pieces of equipment that is not only capital equipment that would need to be approved, it's a rather large expenditure as well. So we'd have to go to Plan B on equipment like that if the budget weren't approved today. In summary, the budget item requires a four-fifths vote to be approved. Proposition 26 allows us to impose or collect these fees. We developed the fee study in, under the auspices of Proposition 26. The fees were publicly noticed and adopted properly by the Board. The fees have specifically been isolated to task in each of the departments that have responsibility for administration, regulation and enforcement of the program. And ultimately, the fees are paid by those participating in the program or as specifically mentioned in Prop 26, are going to enjoy some benefits of the program. And that would be our recommendation is ultimately to allow us to exercise these fees through the budget and the appropriations process. But if not approved, our department heads, our staff don't have the opportunity not to implement this regulatory program. It's been adopted and it will become effective and the fees will become effective by the end of the year. And we'll split our time between tasks to perform not only support in the regulatory program, but we'll also split time across the other existing programs. And in, in my humble opinion, that represents a detriment not just to the programs, but also to our public and to our staff that'll be pulling double duty on trying to prioritize these tasks and fulfill the responsibilities that they have in their programs. And with that, I'll close. We have several people that have participated, not only in the fee study work group, obviously department heads that participated in recommendations from the department heads' meetings as well, but also folks that are on the work group that's been meeting every Friday to implement this program. We also have Krista here today. She did the lion's share of the work on the, the budget that's before you with the item. And then I, I think Judy's here as well. And if there's any questions about the forthcoming personnel item, we could address those as well. And with that, I'll open it to questions from the Board.
Do any of your, any of the department heads want to make a statement since you guys have all been intimately involved in this, this time? Okay. Questions from the Board?
So I'm clear in what you're saying, that if we do not have the four-fifths votes, the work will be done because we have two ordinances that have been passed? And given that's the case, then staff has to implement those ordinances, do the work, which would then impact the reduction in time they would have for other tasks or priorities that the Board has.
That's correct.
If it's determined that there isn't the four-fifths vote to spend the money that we've collected, so then we could say, this isn't as high a priority on the list of priorities we give your office, or we give Mr. Maurer, or we give Mr. Vanner, then they would just, it would just be dragging out the implementation of these two items, correct?
Well, I, I think a better way to try and describe it, ultimately, the answer to your question is yes, but the discussions that we've had in the work groups and with the department heads is that ultimately, we're going to balance time performing duties across all of our particular areas. So frankly, I don't think it'll just impact, or we don't think it'll just impact the regulatory program, but it'll impact all of the other programs in the departments that have responsibility for administration and execution of these ordinances.
And the departments that were involved with the fee study at this point feel that those, that the time or the positions are correct from their experience going back to the urgency ordinance and through all the time dealing with this?
And most of them are still here in the room. I don't want to speak for them, but we've, we've asked those specific questions. I can tell you, as we're looking through how the program will be implemented, we're making different recommendations. For one, as an example, Tracket and the way we would use it is, is kind of evolving. But at the end of the day, the answer to your question is yes, we feel strongly, we as a group uniformly feel strongly that what we've presented in the fee studies and what was presented to the public and ultimately adopted by the Board is what we need to implement this regulatory program.
Thank you.
Just, so we've given our staff mandate to do something. It's a zero-sum game. You only have so many hours in the day. So something comes off when something else goes on or gets reduced. So we've spent a lot of time up here talking about mandates and unfunded mandates from the state. So we actually have a mandate that we can fund. And so it's not a, so it's a plus game. We add our capacity, which doesn't take away from other people. Is that more or less correct?
Yeah, that's correct. And the way I would summarize it for the work group, and again, they're here, they can speak for themselves. We have amazing department heads and staff that have been working on this. But the way we, I think collectively have arrived at this is that it's a policy decision. It's up to the Board to make decisions about the ordinances. In our opinion, that decision has been made. And it's our responsibility now to have an effective regulatory program, enforce it well, have it be streamlined, and we want to do the best work that we can for implementing the program. We also want to continue to do good work across all the rest of the programs and all the other departments, the responsibilities that we already have. So really, the zero sum, I, I don't know if it's, it's, you know, one thing or the other is not going to get done. Frankly, we think that all of our work is going to suffer, whether it's on the regulatory program or all the other programs. And I, I don't want to, I don't want to overemphasize it and say that our department heads and our staff won't try to do the work. They will, we know that they will. They've evidenced that. One of the things I've talked about in many of my presentations is the amazing staff that we have. They'll work as hard as they can to get this done, but at the end of the day, the program is very complex. It requires a lot of hands on the wheel. It's, requires involvement of, of a lot of the land use departments. And to do that right, we need the appropriate staffing and time on task to be able to enforce this program.
Sucrez Toffenelli?
Let me put it this way. A four-fifths vote is saying, we want to hold these people to the, the highest extent when it comes to environmental concerns and, and other parts to this ordinance that have been put forward to protect and mitigate the issues with, with the surrounding neighbors and throughout the county and concerns. And also, a four-fifths vote for this, or a five-five vote for this is also saying, yes, we want to continue doing the best we can to provide services to the people throughout the county.
That summarizes the discussion that we've had as a work group and the, and the voice that we have uniformly.
With this position control list, right, right now, the way I'm understanding you're putting it forward is this isn't when we're finalizing the position control list. That comes forward in the future, December 10th.
That would be the next Board item if, if the Budget's adopted.
So this may be a little bit fluid depending on working, as you work with your work group moving forward and their suggestions and possibly somewhat streamlining the process through Tracket, if that's a possibility and, or more work that may come forward as you find out more of the state law.
It's a fair representation of what we need right now. The department heads have worked very closely with Judy in being able to put this position control list forward. But if there's any changes or modification, we'll highlight those. Frankly, I think our work group has been really thoughtful about trying to make a streamlined process and us having the opportunity to learn lessons about how we can do business across the county better. But it's also part of our transparency and accountability piece that we'll track all the changes. Whether or not the Board expects us to do that, we have deep commitment to making sure that we're real clear about identifying anything that's changed along the way. Or we have an epiphany, say through the use of Tracket, or maybe the staffing pattern may change in, in how we identify the appropriate way to be able to do site inspections, as an example.
With this, has the discussion gone forward because you've got FTEs here? We have a certain amount of money. It's only allowed per Prop 26 to facilitate the permitting of the program moving forward. So with these other line items that we have, do we, have the department sat down and worked together to put together a job code per, per se? For, because each department from our discussions before have a little bit of different time card issue? And, you know, something that wasn't applied during the urgency ordinance and part of the problem that, you know, we, we fully tracking all the money to the very end comes down to whether there's a job code per se when people felt their time cards. Is that part of the process you're seeing down with these departments and working through?
Yeah, it should have been a little bit more distinct when I identified the Fiscal Work Group. Kathy Gomes was involved, Krista and, and Human Resources as well. We've, I'll say we, just because I get to go along with good work, but they were very thoughtful about identifying job ledgers for both 17.95 and 9.22 and developing a time card specific to cannabis regulation. And it's been distributed to the departments, they're recording time on it now, we're logging the time. And then ultimately, the departments will be reimbursed for that time from the fee monies if in fact the budget is adopted.
So you've already moved forward on tracking that time?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you.
Sucrez Calaway?
I have one question, maybe on Tracket. Will all the departments who are involved in this be entering the, their time or the, what happened in the field on Tracket like we do for the permitting system?
Can't commit that we would use it for time tracking per se. We have contemplated ideas of checklist for permit review and having them write in Tracket, but also checklist out in the field. Specific to time tracking, what we've been focused on is the cannabis time card and being able to document the time there. It's something that we can go back and audit, we can go back through the, the files, but we'll definitely make note of that and I'll, I'll discuss it with the group.
So if the application comes into you under Tracket, you enter it and track it, you start the process, and then when it goes to planning, they enter that it's been approved or whatever issues they have? And then it goes, I mean, it goes just like any permit system? That's how you're going to use?
So the way we've contemplated it is that in, if you imagine this being the Cannabis Control Office, that somebody seeking a permit would come in, the staff would go through their permit to make sure they have everything that they need in a permit, they pay their fees and we'll use Tracket electronically. We'll scan all the forms and then it gets distributed to the department. And the departments, whether it's planning or building, or in some cases, Public Works, can do their work independently and, and log that into Tracket and electronic signatures and, and verify that they've done their approval.
It's just such an awesome program.
The, the work group has done a really nice job with it. I think if they were sitting up here, for one, they deserve thanks for their work, but we also, Doug Oliver has some experience with it in a previous agency. We don't use, call it by name anymore because now he's here, but he's really, he and IT have really worked hard on doing this. And then the other land use department heads have, have got on board with that as well. But I appreciate the thought that Doug's brought to this as well.
Sucrez Toffenelli?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. So I can fully understand this program. I come in and apply for a permit. I give you all my plans that are required, what I'm going to do on the property, and I pay you a fee. But what I'm seeing here is if I, if I, if I apply for a permit anywhere else, my permit fees I pay. But if I have on my plan here, I need to build a building, I need a permit for this, I need a permit for electrical, I need a permit for grading, you have to pay separate amounts for those permits. So the Building Department, the Planning Department, Public Works are going to be charging separate fees in addition to this fee.
The, the fee is?
I'm, I'm having a hard time following that because that's what they do normally. If I walk in for a plan to submit for a permit to build on my, on my, a house on my property, I don't come into a cannabis or a building department group and say, I want to pay a fee for you guys to review my permit so I can now go to the building and pay another fee for another permit or to planning or so forth. So I, I'm not sure why all of, when I pay a permit for an application, I'm not paying the fee. And, and why are those fees being charged when I'm doing the same thing that I would do if I was building a house to the Building Department or the Planning Department? I would, it doesn't, so I'm paying.
Those are, those are good questions. The fee as documented in the fee study is very specific to administrative, regulatory and enforcement tasks related to the cannabis program. If for whatever reason, you have a house on the property and you need to re-roof it or you have a pool or a deck, those are separate and distinct fees that somebody would pay in association with that. But if they want to cultivate, the tasks involved in going through 17.95, identifying compliance through each of the different land use departments, the time and effort is what we're charging for specific to the cannabis permit, the cannabis cultivation permit. So the distinction is if you need a building permit, you just go straight to the Building Department. This program touches all of, may touch all of our land use departments. And so our recommendations all along would be that there's a coordinating office that helps the workflow through the different land use departments, that takes the money, that is responsible for managing the budget. And then ultimately, one of the things that's lacking in all of our programs is key performance indicators or performance measurement that's built into our program that we want to be able to bring forward and evidence on, on this particular program. I don't know how else to describe the distinction, but at the end of the day, the office would coordinate that.
What I'm getting at is if, if you look at this a little bit different in the fact, if I come in and apply for a permit and I say, this is what I'm going to do, I give you my drawings, can you not have this department say, okay, we need to review this before we go forward even to collect a fee from you? Because we want to go to the Building Department for review and say they need these permits and we'll add that into the fee. Building, a Planning Department has a CUP they need to issue. The Public Works has a grading permit for all this to do. So when you come back, we'll give you a number of a fee that you need to pay to cover this permit. And then everything's covered on it and a guy knows how much he's going to have to pay in order to move forward with it. Because right now, when they submit for this, this permit, $12,000 may be totally inadequate. It, it could be, they owe $56,000 before they can put a plant in the ground in order to move forward with what move forward with what they have. Don't you think it would be more enlightening to them or more transparent to them to know when they get the process coming back exactly what it's going to cost them to move forward?
Well, the way I'll answer that question is that the work group is our department heads that are responsible for that, and frankly, I trust that if they thought that was the best way to do it, we'd have a recommendation for that. However, what we have talked about is a, for lack of a better term, an initial review to say, "Here's all the types of things that you might need." We've talked about developing guidances for, if you have an accessory structure that's not permitted, here's what you would need to do in building, if you need electrical, et cetera. So the program office would be responsible for helping work through with a person that submits a permit. There wouldn't be the definitive decision, but the guidance would be provided at the time that the permit comes in. At the end of the day, and this is the way all of the other cannabis regulatory programs work, with the exception of one that I can think of, and it works this way with our other fees too, we don't do the review and charge the fee after. We're paying the fees to do the review. Now, frankly, I could see how it might evolve. I can't remember which program it is, whether it's Monterey or Santa Barbara, can't recall, but one program has an upfront meeting fee where you have to pay $2,600 to have the initial meeting where you get your permit reviewed, you pay that right upfront. And you get, essentially, you get a go or no-go from that meeting. If there's correction notices that, for lack of a better term, if there's corrections you would need to make in your permit, you go away, you do that work, and you bring it back. We hope to front-load that with information to those who are seeking permits with guidances that each of the departments are working on. Frankly, some of the guidance already exists in the building department, and you can go to their webpage and find out, you know, what needs, what you have to pay fees for, et cetera. But at the end of the day, it might help us make our other programs more robust as well in terms of, you know, what any community member wanting to know what a grading permit might cost them. We may be able to be more, grow our transparency in that way through the program.
I just, I see here, planning department went six new people for this program. And I'm not sure where we're getting six new people. Your fee schedule is only 152, is what you're basing this all on, 152 people. I don't know where the other 40 went, if they haven't paid their taxes, they're not eligible. The 152, I don't know where that came from. But even the six people in planning department to review those when, in having a fee for it, when, if I have to go to planning department outside of this, I have to pay for them to review the same plans again? Same way with building department. The fee includes, when I go there because I need to put a structure up or electrical for this property, they've already reviewed the plans, but part of their fee to get the permit is to review the plans. So it seems like we're being double dipping here because they've already reviewed the plans, they've already said you need a permit for this. Now we're going to say, "Go over and get a permit in order to do what you want to do for your application," and have them review them again.
So that's part of the complexity of the program is that no one site's going to be exactly the same. They're going to have to meet the same regulatory compliance, but one site might have an accessory structure that needs to be built and permitted. One might have a well, one might have electricity requirements that's separate and distinct from any of the other cannabis cultivation requirements in 17.95. So our responsibility under Prop 26 was to isolate the specific regulatory and administrative fees for 17.95 or 9.22. Your point is well taken. They may have many other fees that are required depending on their site-specific, and that would be part of the initial review to say, "We need to verify," say, for example, if you have structures on your property that don't have permits, we might have to push you through the asphalt process and get them permitted now if they weren't permitted in the first place. We have other functions that are going to be responsible aside from 17.95, but we're not charging them for the cultivation permit.
I have another question. The fee schedule is based on the initial application, and all these, the staffing requests is based on that. Is there a fee schedule that's been presented after this as an ongoing program? What's their yearly fees associated with that? Because I see you trying to subtract or take $1.9 million from 152 growers that supposedly now, at this point, and can't do it until they get the permit, do not have plants in the ground now, and haven't been growing for two years. The urgency ordinance, when they came forward with the urgency ordinance, you had already had been growing. So they already had been growing, they've already had income coming in. Now supposedly, you're trying to get $1.9 million from 152 growers again that have had a plant in the ground for two years, and they can't put a plant in the ground until they get through this process. So after this process has gone through and you supposedly get the $1,900,000 that you're spending totally here, and what your rejections are, how do you fund this program annually? With all these people?
So that's a good question. There's a couple of points I want to touch on. When you mentioned 152, when I presented the fee studies, I was quite specific in the presentation that there's 192 applications possible. Frankly, we just took 80% of them, assuming that not all 192 would be, or 190 would be able to put permits forward. So that's where we got that number from. It's not an exact science, but that's where 152 came from. In the fee study that's been vetted to the public, that I provided the link for, that the board adopted, there is a renewal fee of $2,600 in there. So the first year, the permits most likely won't be 152 permits, but whatever get through in the first year, then we'll be responsible annually for $2,600 for a renewal fee. Ultimately, over time, the program will become mature and it'll only be the number of permits, assuming we max out at 190 that were ultimately eligible. It'd be 190 times $2,600 per permit, some point down the line, three years, five years, et cetera. We designed this fee study specifically to address that by scaling up and scaling back down in extra higher staff, that to take the initial volume of up to 152 permits in the first year, and then all the renewals that will come through. Frankly, we assumed there would be 100% renewals. I think if you, it's a safe assumption that if you go through this process in the first year, probably going to pay the $2,600 in year two to move forward. So the first three years or so, we're going to have the initial permits and the renewals coming through, and then at some point, the program will become mature and it'll just be the $2,600. And at that point, we would be staffed around the workload to do the renewals, which are substantially less than the initial.
So you have on your staffing request by departments, 17 new hires. That's what I counted up here as new. After the first year, what are you going to do with those 17 new employees? When you hire them, you're going to tell them they're extra hire, you're only going to be here for a year? What happened last time in the urgency ordinance, 26 of them stayed, and we're still carrying them now. So are we going to add 17 new employees and then only charge $2,600, which is not $12,000, and certainly won't carry the weight of the 1.782 that you're using here to fund this? You're going to have $300,000, if that.
So I'll talk through the process again. I don't know that we're going to have 100, none of us know if we're going to have 152 or 100 permits or whatever in year one or year two. Your guess is as good as mine. If we do another fee study, we'll incorporate some new inputs in that. But at some point, the program will become mature. I don't anticipate that'll be year one, two, or three, but somewhere around year five, we're going to have all the permits we're going to have for the most part. We won't have a lot of new permits coming in. What we'll have is, you know, maybe change of locations, change of owners, things like that. But at that point in time, we'll have, let's assume 190 permits, that we're going to, at some point, hit full capacity of these permits. It would be 190 permits times $2,600 per year, plus the CBCBs that are necessary to keep the program running forward. That amount of money would be the fee revenue in the future. Are there extra hires that may only work a year or two or three? Absolutely. And it's unfortunate and it's difficult to hire those folks, but the option is either don't do the work and delay the process, or bring them all in as permanent hires, and then we have, you know, issues with that as well.
Sucrez Toffnelli?
Turnover on staff. So talking about the urgency ordinance, because we all lived through this, we're all present in one fashion or another through the time, and, you know, once those regulatory fees were cut off, we, there was a, there was serious discussion about the staff that was retained. Talking afterwards, even during meetings this year and discussing that, I think, I do believe, for example, the sheriff did bring up that he had rolled over some of those into open positions that you had prior. You know, so they weren't necessarily people that we, positions we kept on in addition to what we had already had, they rolled over into an open position, and there were people that already worked here and already had a working relationship with their departments and were able to roll over into a position moving on. But there's also other positions we did retain up and over that had a significant impact to our general fund moving forward. So with that, do you plan on doing an audit on this program regularly to see if it's being held to, you know, the best accountability and everything?
If, and I'll speak for one person on this, this is my opinion, but if I have it my way, I will make a recommendation that we do bring in an independent audit firm that audits this program annually, and that we use the audit as a public display of how we've brought the money in and how we're utilizing the money. That's not contemplated anywhere, but it'd be unique to our program. If we're going to have a robust program and a strong regulatory environment, that's a recommendation that I would make. And ultimately, that cost would be part and parcel to the fee study. And we've suggested all along that this fee study isn't something that will live in perpetuity when we know how many permits, we know the time and effort. We frankly might need to drop it or increase it depending on the complexity of implementation of 17.95. So all along in numerous venues, we've said we would audit a couple of things. One is audit the fee study itself and the time and effort that goes into it. I've mentioned program measures and identifying for the public. Frankly, I'd like them to be developed by the board, but in the absence of being developed by the board, our work group will develop performance measures and we'll bring them forward, and we'll use OpenGov to track the program transparently. I'd like a piece of that to be an independent audit, like we do on, you know, we have an annual audit of an external, with an external firm now. I would recommend that we don't use the same firm and that we have them look, don't just have them look at this program specifically. I would say we bring in a firm specific to this program and they give a report annually based on the program. But that's, you know, that's in, you know, next steps. That's something that I'd like to see for the program, but it isn't something that I've presented to this board until this point.
Well, could it be part of this right now? I mean, if we so chose, could we amend this to add that audit into the structure? I mean, I'm not asking so much as I want to, I want, that's something I would like to be part of this structure, and that way we know how we're going to be proceeding in the future. Along, sir, I asked my question, you answered it very well. But with that, you know, the track it also, you said there would be a list, each, it would go out pretty much the way I understood it from you and from what I've understood from a previous dialogue on track it, is that once that application's handed over the counter in one area and it's entered into the computer, that's when you take your, you take the fee then for the process. That's when it goes out to all the departments that, at the same time, that are part of the structure for regulating cannabis, planning, building, public works. So if public works gets it, they're like, "Oh, well, they're going to have to move over this much soil, they're going to need, they're going to need a grading permit." At that point, that could sit in that next fee regardless. So if I go to building and I, you know, to Mr. Oliver, and I'm just building my house, I'm not, I'm not growing weed, I don't care about growing weed, but I'm just building my house. I go through the process of doing that, and they say, "You're going to move over this much dirt on your property. You have to go to public works, pay another fee at a separate time for a grading permit." Am I correct?
I'm not an expert, but I understand the process to be that way as well.
So it's not just this that applies in that fashion, it's other processes throughout the county. And throughout time, you know, one place, they may not plan on digging, they might have a perfectly flat property and they might throw their pots on top of the ground, so there may not be incurred a grading permit at that point. I'm not 100% sure how that applies, whether moving the dirt in from out of there is part of that grading permit. But, so, yeah, I basically got to my point. I definitely, as we move forward on this, I definitely would like the rest of the board to consider moving forward on, you know, an outside audit. Also, my personal opinion is yes, you know, someone separate, but let's rotate that outside audit every so many years, because after a while, someone working with a certain entity, a lot of times they get overly comfortable, and some things end up sliding just so they can retain that contract. And I would, you know, you know, they should earn that contract.
So I'd like to touch on a couple of things with that. I don't think we need to modify the fee study now to do that. The fee study's based on annual, you know, I mean, any fee study you look at, it's not a perfect science, right? So we have annual FTE built in that fee study for annual salaries broken down by percentages that they be responsible for the program. Frankly, I think that we can look at ways, under the current existing fee structure, to still fit an audit in, and then when we get further down the road on the program, that we may have to make adjustments to the fee schedule. At the end of the day, if it's paid for out of Measure C tax or something else, I think the value in having an audit program in place is worth wherever we fund it from because there's such a high volatility around the industry. And so the audit, in my book, is worth it. Whether it's this program or any other, you should turn your auditors over regularly. Four years is fairly common, but in a program like this, I would suggest maybe sooner than that, but certainly no later than that. Then I want to touch on one more thing that you mentioned with the building house as an example. When somebody comes in to pull a permit to build their house, we don't look at their income requirements, we don't look if they have money in the bank to fund the fee that they have to pay. That fee is dependent upon the time and effort it's going to take for us to review the house and issue that permit. In the case of a cultivation permit, if anybody has been growing the last two years since there was a ban, they would actually be excluded from this permit process. So if we know they were growing and they were growing illegally, they're not able to grow under 17.95. I don't particularly think it's the responsibility of the county to examine where their revenue came from to enter into this permit process, because we don't do any other sort of income verification or capacity in any of our other permits. I'm not sure why we would do it with the motivators in this particular case.
Okay. So a public comment, I would like your questions to be, or your statements to be directed towards the board. This is not a discussion, we will have a rebuttal. This is not a discussion, we will have a rebuttal afterwards. Board members can, if you ask a question, it's a good question, your respective board member can ask it of the staff. At the end of this, three minutes, Carl, you'll begin.
Really friendly these days. Started with Mr. Stot and ended up with Carl. Thank you very much. Well, I don't have any problems with, with the document that staff has presented. In fact, I'm very proud of them from the work they've done. I think, I think, I like the staff. I like all of Calaveras County's staff. My problem was with, was with the alternative. When I read the alternative, the first thing I did was call my attorney. Middle of the night. So I'm going to read what I, what I wrote. I was planning on sitting this one out, but this is too egregious and is churning my stomach. Item 20 on the agenda for 1119 Calaveras County Supervisors' Meeting appears to be an illegal threat, as the stated consequences, actions, will violate government code. Government code clearly states that the money can only be expended with at least a four-fifths vote of approval on a budget adjustment, or if the expenditures are budgeted with at least a three-fifths vote. But the summary of item, or the alternatives on item 20 state that if there is not a four-fifths vote, the architects of the ordinance will still expend the money, violating the government code. Effectively, they, the architects of the ordinance, are saying, if you don't get, if we don't get what we want, we'll bring the county's offices to a standstill with an illegal, imposed, overwhelming burden. The architects of this plan, ordinance, are holding the supervisors' votes and their constituents' well-being hostage with an illegal and unethical threat. A legal threat is if you don't do something lawfully, I'll turn you in, or if you do something unlawfully, I'll turn you in. Would you please review, oh no, that goes to the, that goes to the DA and the Attorney General, the rest of it. I have no problems with, with you voting for this, but I do have a problems with the way it was stated. You don't do that. You do it, but you don't threaten, and it appeared threatening to me. Okay? Very good.
I'm a little more from District 5, and what has been missing from this discussion from the beginning is the overall effect. If all we had about our automobile transportation system was the wreckage and carnage statistics, well, there'd be a mass movement to abolish the automobile altogether. But when you consider what we gained from this, this whole system, I mean, the industry that's dependent on the freeway system and so forth and so on, and that's kind of what's, what's missing here in this operating budget, all we have is the downside, the carnage statistics, but we don't have anything about the benefit of, of the whole program. I mean, if this industry generates 13 million a year, or 15 million a year in GDP for the, for the county, some of that goes to the hardware stores, some goes to the gas stations, some goes to the grocery stores, churches, and, and whatever else. And that isn't showing up in this discussion, and hasn't for, for a long time. It's been missing from the whole thing. And as, as for cultivation permits and billing permits and et cetera, a person doesn't have to live on the property to cultivate it. Maybe they will cultivate this property for five or six years before they build a house. So they shouldn't need a building permit for their house until they build a house. Anyhow, thank you.
Boy, big job. Good work you did. The, my comments go beyond this particular item, in, in that it's addressing the regulation as a whole, because it has an effect on what's happening here. One question I have is, what's the actual cost of the program? Because we have a cannabis regulation operating budget, we should know what the overall cost is going to be. Number two, what is the cost to the regulated industry, the cannabis farmers? When you compare those farmers to the unregulated industry or the black market, what's it show? If, if the cost is so much higher to be regulated, and it doesn't make sense to be regulated? Has there been a business study done from the perspective of a cannabis farmer? You know, there's costs involved, and they have a lot more costs than regulation costs, but regulation costs have an effect on their bottom line. Will a, quote, "strong regulatory environment," unquote, tend to increase the black market? Well, that's almost a no-brainer. We know what ban does. Can we establish industry review? This means that the people that are being ruled can have a voice and say their ideas of what, what they think is not fair and what's fair, and, and so it can be self-regulated in a way that when there's real problems, they're, they're anticipated in advance. And so without an industry input, then you have something that you don't know what the consequences will be to the industry. Sunsetting, unneeded regulations. If after a period of time, this is not working, do we have a mechanism built in that it would sunset, and, which means that it would stop unless, unless it could, reasons could be given for it to continue? We know this is true from the last ordinance. Annual audit, it's a great idea. Without an annual audit, you, you don't know where you're at. The bottom line is, are we dealing with people that are citizens, or are they subjects? It's simpler if they're subjects. But if they're citizens, they have rights to life, liberty, and property, just as each person in this room does. So regulations that will, thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Well, I have a question, a couple of questions. What happened to the money that we paid for the last time that you guys leave?
Sir, what we do is, you'll give three-minute comment to us, and then we can rebuttal at the end. So it's not a question and answer.
Oh, okay. I just, because-
And it's your first time here, it's all right.
It's all right, yeah, because I, I paid that, that money, and then I never heard back, and I filed for it, and I just, this is why I showed up for this, to find out, so.
Ms. Wrist?
I'd like to kind of back up what Al said. He has a lot of experience with this sort of thing, and the Calaveras Taxpayers Association did quite a bit of research on marijuana several years ago when this first came up. And I also was somewhat involved. I thought, when the urgency ordinance first came up, I thought it was really a great idea, and I was very supportive of people being able to grow marijuana. One of the reasons for that was that one of the farmers had come up and talked to me during a break, just outside, and I had talked to him about, oh, is it all going to be organic? And he told me, yeah, of course it's going to be organic. It's medical marijuana. So, yes, it will be organically grown, and I thought, great, that's really good. Well, apparently that's not the case anymore, because now we're growing marijuana for any old purpose. It can be recreational, it can be for health, it can be for whatever, fun. Okay? So my concern still is, I know you folks have worked hard on this issue, but it seems to me that a couple of the really main things that you should be concerned about is, the marijuana should be organic, and we shouldn't have to have problems of any sort of toxic chemical going downhill, getting into our water supply, getting into people's wells. It shouldn't even be possible, because if you had, if you just said, hey, it's got to be organic, that would solve so many problems right there. And you, then your new employees who work for the county could go check and make sure that things are being done properly. Okay? So, just adding in my two cents, I haven't seen a, I have not read everything that's been going on with marijuana the last few months, so I don't have full information. But I haven't seen a cost-benefit analysis done for this program, and I think there should be one. If you want to look at the environmental concerns, if you want to look at that, you really need to do a cost-benefit analysis, because I think the costs, long run, to the county are going to far outweigh whatever benefits you're looking toward. Hopefully I'm wrong, but I haven't seen any real analysis done. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with everything she said. In addition to what she said, it seems to me that the sheriff might be interested in if some of these places are going to be funded by illegally grown marijuana funds. I think that that should be looked at. Well, let's put it this way, your regular constituents are being relegated to second-class citizens in favor of the pot industry. Before the ban, if you went into a certain hardware store, there was no help for your pick and finish questions, because the pot people require the full attention of the store workers. This is just an example of how it's going to be in Calaveras County for constituents, just regular folks that aren't growing marijuana. The constituents of this county are subsidizing and will be subsidizing the Calaveras County pot industry. This has been unacceptable, and will continue to be unacceptable. Is being a second-class citizen acceptable?
Thank you.
Jennifer Stewart, District 2. After looking through all of this stuff, I noticed there's all the regulation that goes on, but not anything that, for the complaint side of it. When somebody comes up with a water issue or some sort of contamination issue, if I have something on my mind, do I go to the cannabis department, or do I go to code compliance? Or if it's water issue, then, like I said, my groundwater has been depleting so much because of use around me, where do I go? How do we, as, as an advocate for the people who are okay with people using marijuana, but to deplete the county's resources in a way where I may not have a say, or I may not have an avenue for redress? That, that concerns me a great deal. Just want to know how we have a voice.
Thank you. The public speakers. Sandy.
Good day, board and staff. Sandy Maitrot, District 2, Mountain Ranch. Property owner since 2001, full-time resident since 2009. I'm not going to go into my background relative to cannabis in this county, but I will say that it's been four years, and when I first started speaking about this, I didn't need glasses to read my public comment. But I stand before you today because I am pleased that we're back and readdressing this, and we are looking at the piece parts that support the Division of Cannabis Control already approved. I've spoken several times during the course of the UO, prior to the ban, about the importance and the criticality of this department, as well as the value that it would bring when undertaking a program initiative of this size and scope. One of the things that I want to make sure is that the approval of the cannabis regulation, operating budget, and regulatory fees is done with the county staff, with the county properly staffed to support the organization at paramount to the program's success. Any decision otherwise would be remiss and call one's decision-making ability into question. One cannot ignore what took place on October 22nd, when the ordinance was approved, and underfund this organization out of spite. I've spoken several times about Cal 815.6. As a reminder, within that code, there is a mandatory, mandatory requirement for municipalities to enforce the civil codes they enact. Calaveras County has now approved an ordinance that requires the establishment of a regulatory framework that enables effective, and I want to underscore that word, effective, oversight and enforcement. Also within that same code is the responsibility to protect against the risk of a particular injury. Keep that in mind. I implore all of you seated before me today to do the right thing to ensure the citizens of Calaveras County have the administrative rigor and law enforcement backing required to protect us from risk, to protect us from injury. Specifically, I would like to see Supervisor Mills address Dina Morris, as an example, one of your most outspoken constituents, if this is not approved, as to how you will keep her safe. Supervisor Taffanelli, your appointed planning commissioner and constituent Trent Fiorino, I want to be able to see you look him in the eye and say why you felt his safety was at, was a risk that it was worth taking. Either of these individuals might file litigation under the auspices of Cal 815.6. Think about it. Don't be foolish enough to set the stage after being so derogatory time and time again about the UO.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, Jennifer Smith. To answer Gary's concern, as I see it, cannabis, cannabis permit is simply a path to one's cannabis permit. If I, as a farmer, need a building for my business, it is incumbent upon me to go to the building department and legally acquire and pay for the permits for that building. If I don't get that building in a timely manner, that lies on my shoulders. Nobody else is, not the cannabis departments. And that's my business that suffers if I don't do things accordingly. It's incumbent upon each participant in this program to understand everything that's involved in a cannabis business and a cannabis farm. It is not simply just paying a permit that the county issues you. I spent over $2 million on my farm this year, and if a farmer is not prepared to do that, that is not the county's responsibility, it is not the cannabis department's responsibility, it is the farmer's responsibility. This is free enterprise, and we need to look at it as a business. Each of you have sworn to bear the truth, to bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the State of California. You swore an oath to take the obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. Let's focus on purpose of evasion. Without, you were elected to faithfully discharge your duties. You were not elected to obstruct or create false bottlenecks in any process based upon your personal moral agenda. Our law enforcement officials have been vocal that they don't like some nuances of SB 54, the sanctuary state law. They've been critical of Prop 47, that reduced many felonies to misdemeanors and raised theft limits. Yet they stand by their oath, and they enact and follow the- Yet they stand by their oath and they enact and follow these laws. I'm asking you to do the same thing. 17.95 has been established, and whether you personally support the ordinance or cannabis use or cannabis cultivation, it is here. It has been voted in and it is on your rulebook to enforce and support. I'm asking you to do the right thing. Fund this department. This ordinance is moving forward. Don't put our employees at jeopardy and put the burden of this work on their shoulders. We are already understaffed. We are already underfunded. Let's do this right. Whether you support the ordinance or not, do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? Seeing none, I will close public comment and bring it back to the board. Are there further discussion or questions? Supervisor Stoppa?
I would like to address some of the public comment. The gentleman that had the skateboard, he already left, so I'm just going to drop that, that one that I took a note down on. There, there was multiple things brought up about, about environmental, the young lady in red over here that came up and talked, and a few others. And the, the, these are the concerns of, I, I believe every one of us, no matter what you believe about the issue regardless. The state, through track and trace, has put together a lab testing for, for these things. So the, the limited, the limit on pesticides and fertilizers is very extreme, all the way down to the heavy metals. So it's going to be hard for some people to even plant in the natural ground in their area in some instances. Also, through the Water Quality Control Board, when you, when you file through there, there's actually runoff and you have to show a site plan and you have to show what the runoff goes through. And if we, if funding this will help ensure that people are out there to inspect that things are done the way that, that people put forward on their site plans. So the, you know, funding this program will also help facilitate mitigating many of the environmental concerns. Personal viewpoint for me is the reason, reason for regulation is to mitigate those Illegal farms abide by no rules. The people that come in and they pay their $12,000 and then however much it costs for their building permit and then their grading permit, to the point where they're in $30, $40,000 deep before they, before they even get to put a plant in the ground, those people are paying that money to abide by these set of rules. And at that, and that point, I would certainly hope that's insurance enough that they don't want to lose that permit at a later date and they would want to comply to the full extent of the law that's been put before them. That's it for now, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Stoppa. Mr. Mills?
Yes. It's too bad that this county hasn't approached the so many other priorities since April of this year with the same vigor and enthusiasm that they've done this. Now, if you remember, we didn't fully commit to CBCB, and the reason that I didn't do that, because we removed the sheriff and we made it a separate code section. It ended up as a three to two vote. It wasn't unanimous. This should have been part of Title 17. And I consider the, the discussion below to say that if we're, if we don't agree to this on a four-fifth vote, that we're in essence going to violate state law by doing that, we're going to fund this department another way. It's an out and out threat. Now, I've built and stood up a lot of projects in my life, whether they be departments or infrastructure. And the first thing that you do is you decide, what is it going to cost me and how am I going to bring this forward? What is the backgroundings necessary to make it happen? But I don't see that here. We're, we're pulling together all of these positions, and if we don't fund it with a four-fifth vote, then we're going to be working people out of class. We've got new positions that we're probably going to have trouble filling, just like we did under the urgency ordinance. We're going to have to discuss truly whether these capital assets are sufficient. Is one vehicle, one new vehicle to handle 152? And I remember back in the original discussion, wasn't it about 1,900 workers? And now it's up to 2,888? That's leading me some questions of whether we really understand what's going on. And I've been asking for a long time, and I'm going back to April, of what are the costs to date? We, we want to screen transparency, but we, I have yet to see the numbers on what it has cost in staff time to get us to today. Now, we have an approved budget. It's very specific about what it funds within departments and what pieces that those, those monies are to be spent for. Those departments have specific funded priorities. There was no new department that was set up in the 1920 budget. And there was no funding. There was a lot of things that were, remember the backgrounds under the urgency ordinance, and there was conflicts between whether or not the sheriff and other people agreed to what those background checks were going to be. So they ended up on somebody's desk. That was going to happen again. There's nothing in here about inspections for, for mitigation or remediation. I can take you to site after site in this county that where we've, we've eradicated, but we haven't done anything to remediate. We haven't discussed out-year costs, of whether or not, you know, having 17 people this year is going to be sufficient for next year, or whether we're going to be ending up in some staff reductions. Six planners for this year? And then when we get everything done that we need to do, what's going to happen to them? So what about this in next year's budget? I, I'm not seeing that we're sure. Two more lawyers are in this, in this proposal. You realize that currently with the staff, the legal staff that we have in Calaveras County, that we have more lawyers sitting in this room next to us than we have deputies currently working on the street? Now, I keep repeating Sonoma, and yet it isn't something that really wants to be discussed. But if you want to put together a good program, I would say Sonoma's got a good start. Anybody hear Mr. Biden's recent statement? He doesn't agree with marijuana.
As in Joe?
Yeah, as in Joe. Take the time to read, or to go over the CBS News story about Humboldt County that was done less than three weeks ago, and talking about, well, if we can't get it through the system, we're just going to divert it and we're not making money at it anyway. McGregor Scott, speaking before the folks in El Dorado County recently on the death of Deputy Ishmael, he said, "Due to the regulations in California, the black market is alive and well and thriving." I want to remind everybody, when they start talking about our oath of office, that there is a supreme law in this land, it's called treaties under Article 6, Section 2. Take the time to read it. If you want this so badly in the United States, you're going to need to readjust a treaty. That isn't something I can do. It's not even something that the Congress can do separate of the United States Senate. Treaties are the supreme law. And so when we look at supporting, defending the Constitution, we can only, we can support and defend the pieces that we want, but I have an obligation to defend it all. Now, I did speak to a cost benefit analysis on this back when we were discussing 1795. There's been no effort to do anything about it. I wanted to see an impact report, a true economic impact study done on this. No response. So I think that this thing is just running down a road to nowhere. All it's going to take is somebody to jump up with a lawsuit, like what's happened before, and it all gets kind of pushed into the corner of the court. I don't see a benefit at all here. And I certainly take deep exception to the idea that we would be threatened to the, to the thought that if we don't pass this, we're going to do it anyway.
We're going to, you know, I'm not so sure. First off, I want to, there's some, there's some really good points made by public comment. I want to thank the public for being here today. I think many of you have read this document far more thoroughly than many of us have. Al, I always appreciate subjects are citizens, but I'm not quite sure whether we're hypocrites up here or nihilists, that we just feel we need to destroy everything and not build anything moving forward. But I think we're more like the story of the kid with the ice cream, where they scoop him, a scoop of ice cream, and he says, nope, not going to eat that unless you put some whipped cream on it. For whipped cream, not unless this guy sprinkles. No sprinkles, then you put sprinkles on, then they want a cherry on top, and then they decide, it's kind of melted. No thanks. That's sometimes what I feel like when I'm dealing with this. I compliment the staff and the working group. You guys have done a tremendous amount of work. You have answered the questions that this board has put forward for the last two years. We have put in there environmental monitoring regulation. We have put in there a computer system where we could track things. We have put in place money so that we can hire the people and do this program correctly, so we can pay for cops, so we could do the planning. This is what we asked for. This is what we complained about when we did the urgency ordinance, and now we fixed it and it's just not good enough because the ice cream's melting. So we're just not going to eat it. I find that, I find that very disappointing. I appreciate the work that the staff has done in putting these documents together. Fee study was incredibly detailed, and I appreciated that. The business plan is incredibly detailed, and I appreciate that. I have spoken to the counties of Sonoma. I'm good friends with some of their supervisors up there. They haven't created the perfect, the perfect doesn't exist. What we have is a program that will work. And if we don't do this, we are hurting our county. We are doing an unfunded mandate on everything else. We have the money set aside. It is no one else's money except those who have paid the fee to be part of this, and we should use it accordingly. If we do not use that money, we are going to use other people's money. It is no threat. We have all kinds of mandates that we have to get done. This will just be another thing that has to be done without enough proper staff or planning. So let's not be hypocrites. Let's build something for this county.
Supervisor Cowley?
There was a question about if people had complaints, where do they go? I saw it as two parts. One, complaints are those people who were registered or legal, whatever we choose terms use, and those people that are illegal. I know there's a phone number people can call in on illegal growers and, but I think that was a good comment. If someone has a complaint or a question, where do they go? And I'm assuming it would be to this division, but, I mean, that's just sort of a process question that could be clarified at some point as you get going. Having not been part of this process for the urgency ordinance and what happened, but only what's here now. We put something together. We put in ordinances or rules. Sometimes it's a five-vote vote, sometimes it's four, sometimes it's three. But once it's approved, it belongs to all of us. We can't say, well, I'm not going to support it because I didn't vote for it, which I've wanted to do over time. But we, as a board, take ownership for it. The budget is a really good example. We have a lot of back and forth, and we all might approve or we might not approve, but then the budget becomes ours once we approve it. This ordinance that's approved, yes, it was approved on a three-to-two vote, but it belongs to all of us. It now is time for us to implement it with the funding that will be available to implement because it will be implemented. I didn't see it as a vote. I just saw it as something that this board approved, and we want it implemented. So now we have the money to do it, and I think it's time that, I make a motion. I move that we, what? Want me to talk?
No, I was going to say we have motion.
Yeah, I want to move we adopt the Division of Cannabis Control operating budget and the appropriate changes to the auditor, controller, and the purchasing agent.
Supervisor Toffinelli, you have a motion for it?
Yeah, but I want to speak. I want to address a couple of public comments. This is not a moral issue for me, and those people that know me know that. Any issue that comes before this board, I research it and I vote accordingly and have. Many items that come before this board, I voted for, even though I did not believe in it. Even when I felt it was not in the best interest sometimes, but it was, at the time, the best way to vote for it through the research that I've done. This is no different. It has nothing to do with how I feel about an industry, because you don't know how I feel about an industry. You know how I feel about an ordinance and what's in that ordinance that I disagreed with. I brought, in October of 2017, to this board, a set of regulations that I felt were responsible enough to get going in this industry, and it was turned down. So, so the moral issue is not here. I'm sorry, you're mistaken. I don't sit up here with moral attitudes on issues. I don't look at them like that. But I very, find it very ironic that I am again in a place that my vote on a cannabis issue may be a deciding factor. And although it may not be the determining factor as to the ordinance being enacted, it will determine how it will be funded, which is a huge issue, very huge. I've been told by many people that voting for this item would be the same as voting for the ordinance itself. I disagree with that thought. There's a lot more at stake here than the ordinance, as it will be enacted regardless of today's outcome. The majority of this board voted it into the county codes. That's a fact. The main issue is what is, if this item does not garner four-fifth votes, what weight will be imposed on a number of departments that will have their, to use their budgets and personnel to implement it, along with their day-to-day tasks? And you look back, when I came on this time to this board, in the chaotic state of what the county was in because of an urgency ordinance, and I will bring up the urgency ordinance, and I have many times to point out the inadequacies of that ordinance, regardless of who wrote it or what wrote it or what it was enacted, or who voted on it and who didn't vote on it. There was, there was nothing getting done, and there was fees being paid for that. There, there was people hired for that. There was code officers hired for that. But yet, it consumed this county and planning department and building department, code department, and admin, and environmental health, all these departments. It engulfed everything everywhere you went, everything you did. It had to do with cannabis, and departments were just running ragged. Everything was by the side. You couldn't get permits for anything because it was, they didn't have time. It was a long waiting line. That was the, the reason why department heads and staff wanted to start with 25. And they were tossed to the side. Staff was ignored. They had the experience. They knew what this could, what could happen with this. Instead, we moved forward. We moved forward at letting 192 or 200 or whatever it is, possible permits to go forward. That's an extensive amount, regardless if we're going to add staff or not, and Peter knows that through experience. We have thrown the sheriff and the DA out of this. They, they both spoke on the need to start with 25. They both started, spoke with the need to keep, keep them involved on the permanent processing and the badge processing for background checks. We threw them under the bus. We decided, no, you could just go be the DA and the sheriff. We'll take care of it. Apparently, what we're going to do is, is start again with no experience. We're going to depend on a couple of department heads, but everybody else, we're, we're going to start again, over again, with this new department. And we're asking for funds to be allocated to it now, to start it. And we're going to start it. And we're going to start it full-fledged. We're going to go all the way. We're not going to start with 25. So, so basically what is being said by a couple of people here today is, is correct. We're in a position now, I don't buy the ice cream thing because it has nothing to do with ice cream. I'm sorry, Jack, but it has nothing to do with ice cream. It has to do with the fact what has, has been ordained here and now in a position of, of funding it. And, and I have some problems with the funding source. I, I don't, I'm not sure, and I know you went through a lot of time and a lot of studies in, going forward. My problem is if you don't, if you, if you start advertising for all these departments or all these head staff for these departments and the funding source is not there. Even the CBC, you're talking almost 3,000. I don't think there was 3,000 people working in this industry when we had it going before. And so you're going to get 3,000 people coming in for the CB, CB badges. If they don't show up, you don't have 3,000. You're not going to have the 470 to fund that part of it. It's going to go to the general fund because you're saying we need to implement this. If you don't have a rush for the applications, you've hired all these people and you start processing and the funding is not coming in, it's going to go to the general fund to pay for it regardless of what, we have a four-fifth vote here or not. And in my opinion, it looks like the general fund is going from the get-go, start funding this program. You're asking for 33, 38, 38,000 immediately to buy a vehicle and card machine and so forth. That's coming out of general fund. You haven't taken a dollar in yet. So there's a lot of general fund dollars being expended here that are other people's money that I, I just have a hard time with. And when I brought up about the urgency ordinance and, and when they were already growing, it wasn't the fact of the money and where the money was coming from. That, that had nothing to do, and I'm sorry if that's the way I was projecting to you about the funding source. Regardless if it's in cannabis industry or steel industry or what industry it is, when you have to pay fees, you pay fees. There's no question where the money is going to come from. My, my point was that the industry was already going at that time. It's now shut down as far as permitted. So it's, it's been shut down and be starting all over again. And, and they hadn't grown in three years. Doesn't mean that's where their money's going to come from. The other issue I have is when I was talking about a building permit or planning permit or grading permit, I didn't, it wasn't the fact that every person is going to be putting in a building or every person is going to be putting in electrical that's going to be growing. But certainly if they have to put in a well, which is part of the permit process, where the water's coming from and the testing of the wells and all of that, those are permits that need to be issued and they're going to be separate. They're not part of this permit. But yet these, the fees for this permit are being routed through those same departments. So it seemed like a double dipping to me somewhat when you're paying a fee here, even though it's to obtain a permit, but you're running what you're going to be doing through these, each one of these departments for their review and then you're going to come in and determine you need a permit, you're going to go back through the same department for a review again to determine what your fees are going to be. My, my idea was if they're going to submit what they're going to do, then, then we should review it and they pay one time for a review because right now they're paying two and they're going to be looking at the same thing in the building department. They're going to be looking at the same thing in, in environmental. They're not going to be looking for plans. Doug, I understand that. You're not going to be looking for construction plans that are, but you're going to be reviewing it overall. And so i- if that's the idea, then, then the possibility is during the review process, they could have some idea of what they're trying to accomplish. It just seems at some point it could be, because you're, you're hiring planners and, and you're hiring, the other issue is you're hiring two new code officers. We hired a bunch of code officers under the urgency ordinances, which we still have. Now we're going to hire two more for this program when they were hired, those were hired for this program to begin with. I'm not sure the fee study is, is, were the fees coming in or going to maintain this program? I, I don't think after the first year and you get going on it, you're going to have enough fees coming in to, to handle all of the employees that you've brought on. And my concerns again are absorbing those. I, I, I want to go back to the ordinance itself. I did not vote for the ordinance. I did not vote for 955 or 922, I'm sorry, and 17.95. I had some issues with it and I brought the issues up about it. Now I'm being asked to have a vote to fund this program and, and I, I would, it, it makes it very difficult for me with a couple of issues on the ordinance itself. And that's the, the final statement on, on it under 17.95.210, Section SS, that this board decided to vote three-two to include that in an ordinance is, is absolutely, there's no ordinance anywhere that has a finding like that written on it. If you paid attention to any of the news items that are out there right now, 60 Minutes had one on the Emerald Triangle and what's going on in the Emerald Triangle. And there was interviews with the good growers. There was interviews with the major distributor and the facts that are out there right now and their comments were, one, there's fewer dispensaries in California than there is in Oregon, which creates a huge problem for the market and where all of this product is going. And it was specifically stated by them that it's going through a black market. It's easy to do and the black market does not pay taxes. The black market is not just in other states. Black market is running freely right here in California based on the fact that the legal growers and what products they do sell to dispensaries, there's a glut for it. There's a, it's more than, they're growing more than can be expended or sold and the fact that, that the black market is created openly in California because you can buy it cheaper. They're not having to pay when you go to the dispensary all the heavy taxes. They're not paying the state taxes. They're not paying the, the local taxes. They're not paying the, the sales tax when they go to the dispensary. And that's, I, that was put on 60 Minutes, if you watched the program, October 27th. You go back and review it. And that was from the major dispensary. There's distributor and local growers complaining about the black market and the taxes that they're being charged for their product, what's being forced on them and what's making them, force them to sell it elsewhere. I know the trace and track program is supposed to be up and running. It's not really going well right now. Doesn't say it won't be in the future, but it doesn't mean also that the state is going to have, or the counties who's probably going to be charged to enforce it, is going to be out on every farm all the time, making sure everything is being run correctly. I don't see the manpower there. The state certainly isn't realizing the, the income that they thought they were going to get when this program started. So it makes it very difficult for me to say I will fund this program. And I understand the weight again that's going to be placed if I don't vote yes for this program on all the departments and the department heads. It will be tremendous just from the, from the number that's been decided by this board. So I'm not in favor of this budget as the way it's been presented and the way it is in front of us now.
We have a first on the floor. We have a second. Chair will second the motion. Is there further discussion before a called vote? Very well. Madam Clerk, will you do a roll call vote?
Supervisor Calloway?
Yes.
Supervisor Garamendi?
Yes.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
No.
Supervisor Mills?
No.
Supervisor Stoppa?
Yes.
Okay. Three. Final vote is three-two. I want to thank all the staff for their hard, all their hard work. And we're going to go to lunch now. At 1:30, we will return in a closed session where we will finish the CAO's evaluation. I know some of you are waiting for items that are coming down the road. Probably be closer to 2:30 by the time we get back in this room. So I apologize for that. We're a little, just took a little longer than I thought.